All right. Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called order. All board members are present, so therefore we have a quorum. Board members, we've had the opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Was there a second?
This is Ed's second.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Luckett has moved and Dr. Sebeck has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is approving of the minutes. Board members, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for May 5th, 2020?
So moved.
Is there a second? At second. Mr. Big.
This is Ed's second.
Okay. Dr. Luckett has moved and Dr. Sebeck has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And that seems rather quick, but we've already made it to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Thank you, President Johnson, board members, to all of those who are listening in to our our virtual board meeting. We'll begin, as we typically do, with the video announcement of highlight from the past week or so. And I'll just remind those who are on the call, if you would please mute your line, that'll help us not to have the feedback. So if you are on the call, please mute your line until yours. Thank you.
JPS pre-kindergarten enrollment is underway. Please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us to complete the pre-K enrollment application online and to upload and make a copy of the following documents: a valid governmental ID, long form birth certificate, updated immunization record or 121 form, and two current proofs of residency. After completing the application, take all forms and documents to the Poindexter Administrative Complex at 1017 Robinson Street. Those with a shared residency affidavit will complete registration at Poindexter. Online registration for returning students is underway through the district's active parent portal. To complete registration, the enrolling parent or eligible guardian must provide two proofs of residency showing their name and current physical address. P.O. boxes may not be used, and utility bills used for this purpose must be within the last 30 days. For more information about registration details, visit our website and click on the school registration link. JPS will serve grab-and-go breakfast and lunch meals during school closures through Wednesday, May 20. Meals will be served from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Monday and Wednesdays each week. Children 18 years of age and under will be able to pick up breakfast and lunch at no cost, and no ID is required. Adult meals are $2.50 for breakfast and $3.75 for lunch. Continuing effort to ensure that all scholars have access to at-home learning, instructional packets will be available at your child's school from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. through Wednesday, May 6. Students in grades K through 11 should return those packets on Monday, May 18 through Wednesday, May 20. Drop-off hours are from 3:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. each day. In order to ensure timely grading, JPS high school seniors should return instructional packets and written assignments to their schools through Wednesday, May 6. Drop-off hours are from 3:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Please follow the directions posted outside of each school. For more information about pickup and drop-off dates, please visit our website. The Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees recently approved the suspension of policies related to grading, promotion, retention, and graduation in response to the COVID-19 crisis. Please visit our website to read more about these important proposed changes. Each year, the Jackson Free Press, a free for-profit community magazine, honors teenagers from the Jackson metro area who have demonstrated remarkable talent, character, and community service throughout their high school careers. This year, five of the amazing honorees are JPS scholars. They are: Sky McKee, a sophomore at Wingfield High School; Amari Quick-Collins, a sophomore at Jim Hill High School; Courtney Sutton, a senior at Forest Hill High School; Kelvin Gardner, a senior at Provine High School; Shakira Bolton, a junior at Lanier High School. Sky McKee works as a volunteer to help keep her community clean. She works with the Rotary Club to assemble food packages for the needy, and she plans to attend Spelman College in Atlanta. Amari Quick-Collins is a starting point guard for Jim Hill High School's basketball team. Amari plans to pursue a degree in medicine. Courtney Sutton volunteers at the Cottage Grove Nursing Home and its summer feeding program. As an honor student in the top five of her class, she plans to major in elementary education. Kelvin Gardner studies photodynamic cancer therapy at Millsaps College. He became interested in the field as a child after loved ones were affected by the disease. Kelvin plans to major in biomedical engineering. Shakira Bolton is a member of the National Honor Society. She volunteers to feed local children in need and works to provide free prom dresses to students who cannot afford their own. She plans to major in business administration and the performing arts. The Michael D. Johnson Memorial Foundation is accepting applications for the Michael D. Johnson Athletic Memorial Scholarship. The deadline to apply has been extended to Friday, May 15. The foundation will present the award to the scholarship winner on Saturday, June 6. Candidates for consideration for the Michael D. Johnson Athletic Memorial Scholarship must: be a graduating senior in the Jackson Public School District, be a member of a school-sponsored varsity athletic program, have an overall 2.5 or higher GPA, and be a Metro Jackson resident. For more information about how to apply, please visit our website and visit the MDJ scholarship webpage. You may also contact the Michael D. Johnson Foundation at 769-208-6601. Rena Moore, an arts educator at the Academic and Performing Arts Complex Program at Jackson Public Schools, is one of eight recipients of the Arts Institute's 2020 AIM Awards. The Arts Institute of Mississippi, or AIM, at the University of Southern Mississippi honors high school-level arts teachers that have made an impact through exemplary achievements in arts education throughout the state of Mississippi. The recipients of the 2020 AIM Awards are high school teachers in the arts disciplines, including creative writing, dance, music, theater, and visual art. Moore serves as the Director for the Secondary Educators Division of the Mississippi Arts Educators Association. Congratulations, Ms. Rena Moore. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and stay connected about the district's coronavirus response, you can visit jackson.k12.ms.us/coronavirusresponse.
And as always, we want to as always, we want to thank our instructional television production team for their hard work in providing excellence in communication to our scholars and our parents and community members during these challenging times. This past Friday, as some of you know, it was the National Recognition of School Principals. We're so blessed to have such talented and committed school leaders working with us here in Jackson Public Schools, and so we celebrate them. We celebrated them this past Friday, and we celebrate them as we continue on in our service to our young people and their families. This week, however, is a very special week here in JPS. It's officially National Teacher Appreciation Week. And each year, during the first week of May, the nation celebrates teachers across the country. And you may have seen some of this already on some of the social media and other platforms. Please join JPS as we celebrate our wonderful, amazing teachers. Today, May 5, is National Teacher Day, and I want to thank our JPS educators. With this sudden end to our normal school year, our JPS educators have continued to offer guidance and instruction through virtual classrooms and learning-at-home lessons to our scholars and supporting their families. So thank you to all of our teachers. Thank you, thank you, thank you on behalf of our leadership team, our district, and our scholars. I also want to thank send a special thank you to our newest teachers, and that would be our JPS parents. For all of those who are newly mentored classroom teachers serving as our mathematics, reading, science teachers, writing teachers, you name it. We know that you, as a kind of on a flip of a dime, you've had to join us in maintaining instructional programs to our young people as well as maintaining many of you full-time jobs and juggling them. And so I've already heard from several parents that they have a newfound respect for our classroom teachers. So while we're celebrating our classroom teachers for all that they've done and continue to do to serve our young people and families, we also want to give an honorable mention and shout out to our parents who are now serving as well in locked arms with our teachers as teachers for their young people. Board members, as we typically do each month, we want to take a little bit of time to provide updates regarding our bond program. So at this time, I want to welcome our Executive Director of Facilities and Operations, Mr. Don McCracken, who will join us and share some of those bond updates. Mr. McCracken.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Green, Mr. Johnson, board members, and Dr. Green. More than happy, and it's my pleasure to provide you with an update as to where we are. We're really excited about what's going on, although COVID-19 has put a little damper on all of our spirits, but we're moving forward with the projects that are going on, and they seem to be going quite well. Contractors are performing quite well, and we're moving forward. With the very first page here, you see that we have Phase 1 and Phase 3 professionals, and we've done the interview process, we've done the vetting, and we received 11 semitels, and we have nine firms that we would like to present to you. We've interviewed nine. We did the shortlist, and I were a part of the shortlist. And out of that nine, we have two women business-owned enterprises, and we have four minority business enterprises, and the balance three are non-minority enterprises. It is our hope on May 19 that we can present all of these professionals to you with the projects that we assign to those individuals in the schools that are associated with those projects. We're requesting that we can present that information as information and action item so that we can certainly expedite the design services for those professionals. This page, as always, we just use as a point of reference, if you will, for lane conditions as well as industry market changes and et cetera. So that is just a point of reference or what one may deem a disclaimer. Next page. Since March of what let last month, we've advertised and we've actually had bids for nine projects, and none of these projects worked successful. We actually have two that we would like to present to you this evening for approval so that we can move those projects forward, and those two are Callaway High School, and this is with the school roof, HVAC, and gymnasium renovation. And the next one is Murrah High School, and that is the walkway or the entrance walkway facade upgrade. And the balance of those will be coming to you on May 19. And as I hope that we can award those contracts so that those can get started ASAP. Next slide shows the successful bids, the dates of the bids, and then also pending board approval and the dates that we would like to bring them to the board. Next slide. Continuation of the bids that were successful. The last one was the Callaway High School packet, that's the exterior and interior lighting. Next slide. These are some samples of projects that are actually under construction. We want to show some activity. This is at Chester Middle School, and this is with the portico and walkway repairs. We showed you a month ago or two months ago how poor the condition that that space was, and we're in the process of now doing the demolition to prepare for correction as well as improving that location. And it would also allow the exits to the exterior to be to move smoothly without any disruptions. Next slide. This is at Forest Hill High School Gymnasium. There are a series of projects that were bid for Forest Hill. This is the last one. This is fairly the largest one that impacts the interior floors, the walls, the ceilings, the exterior skin, electrical upgrades, the whole nine yards, as well as restroom improvements. And these are some activities that are going on. To your right just shows where a primary line is coming in, and they're sending it and directing it through a underlying cable, if you will, to connect to the building. And this is one of the activities that's going on. To your lower left, this is the the louvers that are being replaced and improved. The item to your right is the interior of the gymnasium. The roof has been painted. They're now doing seating welding. So work is going on at that particular school. Next slide. We showed to you once before Wilkins parking lot, the condition of the parking lot, and also how it was under construction. Now this parking lot has been completed. The buses now can load safely. The students can exit and arrive and exit the bus staging area with safety. And this also is the last item that's associated with MDE, and now we can request MDE to come out to sign this particular item off so that we can clear that school. Excellent item. These are just samples of exterior lighting that our staff is doing, which is saving a tremendous amount of money. Our staff has gone out on a daily basis to improve these various locations, and they will continue to do this throughout the course of the year. But as you see, the exterior light is at the student parking lot at Wingfield, also at Van Winkle. They're actually out there. They were out there this morning doing wall-mounted fixtures at Van Winkle. Next slide. And this is the last slide. This is work that has been done or has been completed at Jim Hill. This work will continue to be under construction. We will be doing some wall packets that will include improving the lighting conditions at that location. Still a lot of work to be done as a part of the projects that have bid. Jim Hill is one of them, and this will include the interior restroom renovations. And that's where we will bring those project renovations or recommendations to the board on May 19. Next slide. As always, information can be retrieved or reviewed as well as individuals can go to see what projects are scheduled for bid or advertised on our website for those that wish to that are interested in construction work or just perusing our site for bond activities. And with that, that concludes my presentation. You have any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer.
I would like to make one comment. I would just like to thank Mr. McCracken for his leadership and to the board members. We're excited about the work that is proceeding during the closure, and it's the action shot show that work is proceeding and even accelerating. And as Mr. McCracken stated, we have two bids on the agenda tonight for your approval, and we anticipate bringing forth seven at the next board meeting for approval. Thank you.
Thank you both to Mr. McCracken and to Ms. Robinson. I'm excited and excited to be able to share the updates on the bond projects. We know that we had some interruptions there, but I'm excited that things are moving forward and board members looking forward to being able to share even more pictures of the of the things that are happening in the forward movement. Any questions for either of the team members with regard to our bond projects?
No, I'd just like to thank Mr. McCracken and his team, Sandra, for the hard work. It all developed so quickly, and y'all certainly just stepped up and led us through, and you've kept all of the commitments that the board made to our community regarding transparency and engagement. So I just want on behalf of the board to thank you and your team so much for this good work.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ed.
I was just gonna say, the web updates look great. It was great to jump on the site and just see the catalog of all of these wonderful presentations. So thanks to the team for putting them together and making them available to the public.
Thank you.
And I'm sure our students are going to be so excited to see all of these improvements when they come back to school, so it's an extra bonus for them.
Absolutely.
That's exactly right. We obviously, you know, we made some commitments to the community and scholars and families and all, but at the end of it all, the point is to ensure that the environment is such young people's can, young people can learn and really thrive in our schools. And so it feels good to be delivering on that, seeing that movement happen. So thank you again to Mr. McCracken. Again, excited with the movement there and excited to share more over time. Board members, question for you and for others out there who are listening. Have you seen the mini lessons that our team has been producing? Many lessons on that I saw one the other, I watched one the other day on volume, calculating volume. I watched one, I think it was the same day or some other day, where young people were being taught some tools for deepening their understanding of vocabulary, and another was on identifying the theme of a lesson or a story. I'm highlighting this because in addition to all of the materials that we've amassed on our website, in addition to all of the work that our amazing teachers and educators in general are doing to connect with young people, our team has been really creative with identifying some key skills and concepts that young people could learn and that they don't have to necessarily be on a Zoom call or WebEx or Google Classroom. So if you haven't seen them on our Facebook channel, YouTube, it might be on our Comcast channel as well, but I know Facebook and YouTube. Please check those out. These mini lessons are about five to seven minutes or so long, and they're really, really cool. And so for parents who are who are now looking for that next step in their instructional strategies at home, if you want to identify some of those those mini lessons, I definitely encourage you to utilize those and have young people to watch and then talk to you about what they've learned on those mini lessons. I promise you, it will enhance your teaching strategy experience. So and again, a huge kudos and shout out to our instructional team, our teaching and learning team for the work that they've done there. Now I want to talk a little bit about meal distribution and the work that Partners in Education and all of our general, our partners external to JPS have been doing. Partners in Education has received a total of $78,076 in actual donations and or pledges to provide a total of 33 distributions of weekly dinner meals. Nearly 14,000 meals have been distributed today. These distributions are planned through May 21, which is the last Thursday or towards the end of our school year. The plans for our summer feeding are still in process. Wanted to share this information about, because we're really, really proud and excited about the work that our team has been doing as well as all of those who have locked arms with us to support our families during these tough times. Footprint Farms, we've received a total of $38,000 in actual donations and pledges to provide a total of 23 weekly distributions of fresh produce. An additional $3,400 is being raised to continue these this distribution of fresh produce. These distributions will also are slated to end May 21, which is the end of our school year or the last Thursday in our school year. And so again, we want to celebrate and thank so, so much Footprint Farms for their support of our young people and families. In addition to the food distribution, Atlas Energy donated $9,200 to provide weekend food backpacks and packages, which were which were distributed for two weeks in our district. We also partnered with the Mississippi Food Network to distribute 400 family food boxes that valued around $7,200. These contributions were included in the total amount listed earlier, but I wanted to call those out because it's such a large donation that provided to support our family. In addition to all of the food donations and the dollars to support the food donations, we also had several of our community partners to step up and support us with in-kind donations in helping us to get the the Learning-at-Home packet printed and now to family. Those partners include Adams &amp; Reed, Baker &amp; Donaldson, Butler Snow, Canon Solutions, our Parents for Public Schools, Phelps Dunbar, and Representative Debra Gibbs, and Thirsty E.D. Printing. We're very, very honored to have them partnering with us. Their support and in-kind donations totaled more than 22, I'm sorry, $24,000 in support to our district. And finally, as we're talking about the level of support and the kinds of support that we've received from our various partners over the past month or so, the Get to College Center has donated yard signs for each of our JPS 2020 graduates. Total of 1,511 signs were designed and printed with a value of $9,000. And we we're really excited to be partnering with them to because we know that our seniors have a very different experience this year as they're graduating, and we wanted to make sure that we're doing all we can to celebrate them and to just shout them out and let them know that we love them. So we want to again thank you, thank the Get to College Center for their work. As you can see, board members and again to all of the community As you can see, board members, and again, to all of the community members who are paying attention this evening, many folks, individuals, organizations, businesses, some of our public officials have reached out to us, us and have raised their hands to say that they can help and they leaned in with their resources. So we're just so, so thankful. I can't say enough about the outpouring of, of support that we've received. Want to thank as always, Thea Faulkner, who heads our Partners in Education effort. And again, I give a huge, huge thank you to all of our partners. And just two more things, board members, that I wanted to highlight this evening. Our, to our seniors, to our graduating seniors, I know that they've been waiting patiently and sometimes not so patiently, but that they've been waiting for information about our graduation festivity. Our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, will come shortly and share more about the, the information that we have and the plans that are developing around graduation. So you won't have to wait any longer than tonight, but we'll be able to share that information. Lastly, some of you know, I've shared with, that I serve on the mayor's COVID-19 response task force. And one of the things that the task force, this is the group of several officials from around the city and health officials and business leaders and folks in higher education and, and several other areas of, functional area. One of the things that has come of the, of that work is just the acknowledgement of the, the myriad of, of challenges that our Jackson residents are dealing with. And, and one around our mental health. The outbreak of the coronavirus, COVID-19, is stressful for, for all of us. Fear and anxiety about a disease can be overwhelming and cause strong emotions in adults and children. To support the residents of City of Jackson, Mayor Lumumba has established the Mental Health Warm Line. The Warm Line is staffed with licensed clinical social workers who will assess mental health concerns of callers and connect them with mental health providers. The Warm Line is open Monday through Friday from seven AM until seven PM. If anyone is experiencing symptoms of depression or anxiety or just needs someone to talk to, they can call the Warm Line at six oh one, five eight six, three zero seven three. That's again, six oh one, five eight six, three zero seven three, or toll free at one eight six six, three zero zero, seven nine four eight, eight six six, eight six six, three zero zero, seven nine four eight. You can call that line and we'll have that posted on our website as well. The Warm Line will continue to operate beyond the COVID-19 pandemic to address the mental health needs of our community. And also, if you know, anyone who's listening, if you know of someone needing help, please don't hesitate to contact the Warm Line. Remember, we're not alone. We are in this together and together we'll get through it. And so we wanted to make sure that that resource was known to, to our JPS community because the, the issues are far beyond the, the inconveniences that we experience day in and day out and the, the very serious economic stressors that so many of us are dealing with. The, the health, mental health needs are very real and we want to make sure that, that the resource is out there. At this time, board members, that concludes my remarks. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those. And if not, turn the meeting back over to the capable hands of President Johnson.
Board members, are there any comments on the superintendent's report?
I would just like to echo the kudos for the team and Partners in Education and Thea Faulkner and all the good work that is happening to support our children. Thank you all for stepping up to the plate and, and working to not just support our kids with instructions, but to support them with the essential services they normally give if they were actually able to be in our school. So thank you.
It is really wonderful to see the community come together to support our kids and families. Any other comments, board members? All right, next on our agenda, normally we have public participation. We have no one signed up for public participation. I do want to let members of the public know that you can participate in public comment, even though the meetings are virtual. You can email r s. Williams at jackson.k.12.m s.us between five PM and five fifteen to get in line for public comment. There's also a number on our website for you to call if you would like to participate. Also, board members, the second meeting of the month, we have decided that we're going to reserve a small amount of time for board member reports. So if you are representing the board in any official capacity or if you chair any of the board meeting and have a report that you would like to present to the public and to your fellow board members, please be prepared to do that on this, at the second meeting of the month. Next, we have information only items.
Dr. Jackson. Good evening, President Johnson, and to the other members of the Board of Trustees, to Dr. Green, good evening. We are recommending, the administration of the Jackson Public Schools Career Development Center is recommending a review and approval of the district's federally required local plan update for fiscal year twenty-one. This is our budget for our programs for the upcoming school year. These are the funds that will help support the fiscal needs of career and technical education that is managed through the Jackson Public Schools Career Development Center. This budget is in alignment with our district's core values, as well as the stated national goals of preparing all of our students to be college and career ready. We are working in collaboration with building and district staff, business and industry, and the community, post-secondary institutions, in a safe, caring, engaging, and healthy learning environment to create opportunities for student success. This initial budget plan is based on our award notification from the state of estimated funds in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and nine cents. Upon receiving our award notification of actual funds, when the fiscal, the new fiscal year begins July one, twenty twenty, we will do a budget revision to reflect the actual funds. So to give you some insight into the estimated funds and where they came from, if someone would please put up the federal budget summary.
Dr. Jackson, we asked the board members to, to just reflect those pages, so if they can go to page twelve of this report.
Okay, so our estimated funds notification in the amount of one million, seven hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and nine cents comes from our federal Perkins Funds of four hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. We have state funds in the amount of one million, three hundred nineteen dollars, three hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty cents. And we also have an estimated amount of state funds for adult education for twenty-five thousand dollars, for a total of the one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and nine cents. We're also asking for approval of two new courses. The first course is work-based learning. This new course is required under the New Perkins Five Act. And what the course would look like in the district, and it has just really been renamed. It was co-op at one time. It was career pathway experience. And what the course does is prepare students for the world of work. They participate in sustained interactions with business and industry professionals. They get to participate in real workplace settings, or we can create a simulated work environment to provide an opportunity for students to see what the work is like before they actually go into it. It provides an opportunity for them to change their minds and get on a different career path if they don't like what they thought they were initially interested in. Okay, the other course, the Health and Clinical Sciences course prepares students for courses or for careers in, in the healthcare field. And according to the Department of Labor, healthcare will be one of the fastest growing career areas of between now and 2024. And we can see with everything that's going on now with COVID-19, with the coronavirus, there is a great demand for healthcare professionals. Okay, are there any questions?
Yes, Dr. Jackson, could you explain, if I'm a student and I enroll in the healthcare course, what does that look like for me?
Okay, what that will look like, you will get classroom instruction, of course, and you will have an opportunity to participate in clinicals. With this course, you'll have an opportunity to see possibly every aspect of healthcare. Usually, if you would ask a student, what is, what is healthcare or what would they like to do in healthcare? I'd like to be a nurse or I'd like to be a doctor. But with this, the focus is on all aspects. With nutrition, geriatric and gerontology is a big area now because people are living longer. So, and we can, again, there are so many implications with this COVID-19. We see what's happening in the long-term care facilities. So certainly there are implications there for opportunities or careers for our students in the healthcare area of geriatrics and gerontology, taking care of the aged, mental health opportunities. They will have an opportunity to visit and actually see what goes on in these healthcare facilities. And pharmacology, pharmacy, with Jackson and Mississippi being a healthcare destination, students will have exposure to every aspect of healthcare and to make a decision based on their experiences.
That's very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome. And also, we want to start providing, which we already do, a pipeline to help the, meet the needs of this, of this area. So what better way, and with UMMC being the largest employer in the state, we have so many resources right here in our, in our back door, really, in our neighborhoods, to provide opportunities for our students.
Dr. Jackson, this is Jean Hairston. I just want to affirm so many things that you've shared about the possibilities through this program and partnership, and particularly lift up how important that facility is for Board Five and for the greater, you know, city of Jackson as well. But it's a wonderful facility, well-appointed, lots of room, and I'm glad to see that we're able to expand its use in this manner.
Okay, thank you so much for that. And if I may add too, in the process of deciding on these courses, under Perkins Five, we were required to do a comprehensive needs assessment with community colleges, business and industry, and other schools in our surrounding area. And we used labor market data from Mississippi, the most recent labor market data. So our core selections and the things that we're doing in this plan are not arbitrary. They are based on factual information, labor market data. And if I may expand a little bit on the work-based learning too, in the executive summary, I mentioned that we are at an advanced manufacturing state as well. We have Continental Tire right there in Clinton. We've been working with Nissan for many years with our STEP program, our Student Technology Exchange Program. We also have General Electric Toyota on the coast. You have Ingles, all the shipbuilding and everything. And if we can't take students to those places, they have personnel that will come and work with our students with these programs. So there are so many opportunities. And we can go all over the state again. And if you want to go north, right there in Batesville, and, and I'm sure the business is booming right now in the midst of this COVID, there's a, I think it's Batesville or Cassie Company, you can just go on and on and on. They're just manufactured, advanced manufacturing that requires some engineering and input from information technology. So it's not just production that these students learn. They learn how to use innovative problem-solving skills. And, and they're required. We have established a relationship with Continental Tire, and we are testing our students on work keys, and many of them have scored silver or bronze, they've done a little bit better, but they're going to need some advanced skills to be able to do these jobs. So we're hoping to provide that opportunity for them.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Hillary.
Dr. Jackson, are internships available for them, for the students who are involved in this program?
Yes, ma'am. We've been doing some internship job shadowing and work-based learning. Here's, we have a career pathway specialist that works with business and industry to place our students in many of our programs to provide some, some internships and work opportunities, both paid and unpaid.
Okay, thank you. And you also, just to add, that the profile of a JPS graduate talks about our students having opportunities to complete rigorous coursework. Oftentimes, when we think about rigorous coursework, we only think about AP courses, IB courses, college, and our dual credit courses. But the state also recognizes students who receive industry credentials as an accelerated model. So we're pushing our students also that are not necessarily taking the AP courses, that if they receive these industry certifications, that these are also considered to be accelerated courses in the state and nationally, that, that's recognized. With the new career in tech diploma endorsement that students will receive, not for the 2021 school year, but for the 2122 school year, the students will have opportunity to receive this career in technical diploma endorsement where Where if they complete the two years of, of career coursework, they will have that particular endorsement that will allow them to go directly into workforce. It will allow them to gain admissions into certain career and tech programs. So it's built right into our profile of JPS graduate as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson and Dr. Jackson and Ms. Marshall Thomas. It seems like this program is well worth the funds in terms of being able to help our kids get into employment and help them get trained. Thank you for all the additional questions. Board members, are there any questions or comments? All right, nothing else, we will move to information action items. Dr. Merritt and Ms. Miller, Adam A.
All right, great evening to President Justin and Board of Trustees and to Dr. Green. We have before you the approval of the 2019, 2020 Board Order for the Office of Federal Programs, which entails the various title budgets. And just to give you a little overview of the various title budgets, there are several, seven different programs that we fund through the Office of Federal Programs. Three fall under Title One. One is the largest allocation which is given to schools, which is basically the, the general Title One allocation that is to improve proficiency on the state standards in ELA, English Language Arts and Math. Additionally, under there is Title One Part D, which is for neglected students, which a small allocation goes to Hindley Young. And those are the group of students that we serve with the Title One Part D allocation. Additionally, we have the cost pool in there, and that is the personnel that administers the program, each of the title programs. In, in our district, all individuals that work or personnel that works in the Office of Federal Programs, we work across programs. So we do, do a consolidated cost pool. I always want to note that the district is allowed to do a 20% set aside of the total allocation. And roughly, we do a 12%, 12% set aside to, for the cost pool and the administration of the programs. Then there's Title Two, which is responsible for teacher and administrative professional development. Then we have two title programs that are focused on special populations. They are Title Three, which is for English learners, and then we have the McKinley Vento Program. Lastly, we have Title Four, which is the student support and academic enrichment. And under the Title Four Program, we have three components, which consist of well-rounded education, safe and orderly areas and program areas that we can support in addition to technology. And so I do present to you the, the budget for the 2019, 2020 school year, the Board Order.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions or comments? If there are no questions and comments, is there a motion to approve Action Item Eight?
I had just one clarification question. Is it the 2020, 21 budget or the 2019, 2020?
It's the 2019, 2020 Board Order.
It's for this fiscal year?
It's for this fiscal year, yes.
Okay, okay.
That's not what it's, is that what it says on the agenda?
It is not.
We need to make that correction on the agenda. With that correction made, I would move for approval of Item A.
Real quick, so Attorney Kerner, does it matter that the agenda that we adopted has 2020, 2021 and that the item is for the current fiscal year?
I think if the board action expressly indicates the correction of the agenda as part of the item, then that will cover you.
So should we amend the agenda that we adopted?
It sounds like all we have to do in the motion. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Could you repeat your motion, Dr. Harrison?
I move that we approve Item Eight A, various budgets. And let the record show on the agenda and in the motion for the fiscal year 2020, 2019, 2020.
Is there second?
Second.
Dr. Harrison has motion and Mr. Fergus has seconded, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any nays, there being none, the motion is approved as amended. Okay, we have now Dr. Merritt again.
Yes, ma'am, the administration has recommended an amendment to the Bailey Education and Kirkland Group contracts. As indicated, of course, we had lead partners. And due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to, of course, adjust the way that the services have been delivered. And so we are recommending that we amend the current contracts of job embedded professional development to where these services are offered virtually through, that they're offered virtually. So with that said, these Kirkland, which provides math support for the district, and Bailey, which provides ELA support. They will facilitate grade level content sessions for our, our teachers in the district. Also, we are suggesting that, or recommending that we carry this, the contracts out to the end of the school year where schools will have the option, or the district will have the option too, to do these professional development sessions throughout the summer as well as in the fall if we do not use all of the days.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question, Dr. Merritt.
Yes, ma'am.
I know a couple of years ago, the board made a particular emphasis on always having data and when we do our evaluations. And I know things are different right now, we're in the time of pandemic. But I would hope that at some point in the future, we would get a report from your office and your colleagues regarding the work that these consultants have provided and the degree to which they met our expectations and what we can do better to support them as they might support us.
Yes, ma'am, we have, we will provide a quantitative survey where we will look at the third-term benchmark data as well as a qualitative survey, which will entail the input from teachers in terms of the support. So we will provide that for you and we're currently working on it now.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And Dr. Merritt, is that going to be provided when the contract is up for renewal or if the contract is up for renewal?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve Information Action Item B?
Still moved.
Second.
Dr. Sevek has moved and I didn't get the second.
Ms. Hilliard.
Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, there being none, the motion is approved. Now we have the Consent Agenda Items Finance. All of the Consent Agenda Items Finance have been reviewed by the board previously, either brought before us as information-only items or in other presentations, we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions?
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, we did add a third action item regarding graduation.
Oh, I've got the wrong agenda, so let's. And who's reporting on that?
You proceed, Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Marshall Thomas.
All right, good, good evening, everyone, again. The administration recommends the approval of the Facilities Agreement with Jackson State University. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and to adhere to social distancing guidelines and restrictions, the Jackson Public Schools had to revise its traditional commencement to meet these required guidelines and restrictions. The new graduation plan, which I will discuss with you shortly, requires the use of the Mississippi Veterans Memorial Stadium to conduct the ceremonial presentation of the class of 2020. As such, the administration is requesting approval of the Facilities Agreement for the Mississippi Veterans Memorial Stadium with Jackson State University from May 18th through 22, 2020, with contingency dates of May 23rd and May 24th. And at this time, I'll go through the graduation plan with you and the revision. And the, the objective is to provide an overview of the district's revised graduation plans for the class of 2020 due to COVID-19. During the week of eight, of May 18th through the 22nd, all JPS high schools will participate in the recording of the ceremonial presentation of the class of 2020 and the awarding of diplomas at the Memorial Stadium. Parents are asked to drive to the stadium entrance and drop-off area, and only the graduate will exit the vehicle and enter the stage area. And we have 10 cars at a time in lineup. The graduate cannot or will not be the driver of the vehicle. Graduates will be scheduled by last names in groups of 40. They will receive color-coded appointment cards in the mail, and those should be placed in the dashboards of their cars in plain sight. This will allow us to manage the traffic and the flow of traffic as we are pulling our graduates, 10 cars at a time and ensuring that we're adhering to the social distancing requirements. Cars transporting graduates will be lined up as they arrive during their specifically scheduled block of time. This is just, just a pictorial representation of the traffic flow that we will run, where the cars would actually enter the stadium area from West Street. And we'll circle around, Lot Eight is our entrance area in which the grads will be dropped off. And we have a staging area that's actually in the end zone is where our stage will be set up. Students will enter from that area and we'll discuss that shortly. So I just wanted you to just have a pictorial representation of what the traffic flow will look like. In order to protect the safety and well-being of graduates and faculty and staff, we ask the graduates that have been diagnosed with coronavirus or if they exhibit in a sentence, sentence that they, such as a high fever, that they not participate in this activity. We have district nurses that will be on-site to conduct temperature screenings for all graduates prior to entering the stadium. Each graduate will be directed into, to walk across the stage as their name is called to receive their diplomas. An official graduation picture will be taken as the graduate exits the stage. Graduates will receive their official diplomas as they exit the stage and stadium area. A free electronic copy of the picture will be sent to each graduate's JPS email address. Okay, the ceremony will be captured and produced into a formal JPS virtual graduation. And this will be presented on each school's scheduled graduation date and time. Families are encouraged to have a graduation watch party as the grad, as the virtual graduation is broadcasted on the district's YouTube channel, Facebook page, and Comcast Channel 19. Families are though strongly encouraged to follow the latest governmental requirements and guidance around social distancing and large gatherings. Graduates are asked to wear their cap and gown during the graduation watch party as Attorney Johnson, our board president, will confirm their diplomas. Students will also be asked to turn their tassels, and then there will be a tossing of the graduation caps. Each graduate will receive five printed graduation programs, and a video link of the virtual graduations will be posted on our district's website. And just as a caveat, all, only scholars who've met graduation requirements will be allowed to participate in graduation activities. In addition to the staging area, the field at the stadium will be outfitted with chairs similar to our traditional graduation. And each chair will contain an individual portrait of each graduate and their personalized farewell message to their class. This arrangement will represent the formal presentation and unity of the class of 2020. Afterwards, the portraits that are actually displayed in the chairs will be displayed at each school as all the graduates will be inducted into their school's Class of 2020 Hall of Fame. Information has, will be provided to our students on how to receive their, to submit their messages, and we've already started that as well. After exiting the stage, each graduate will take a unity photo standing in front of their simulated class. This is a, just a simulation of what the portrait cards look like. It will be their graduation picture, and this is their official message. Also, on their, on their portrait card will be their current affiliations or organizations while, in high school, and also their future plans. This is the presentation, this is a recording schedule, and this will be included in, in the communication to the parents and the students. Also listing our contingency days. Virtual graduation, these are our regular, our previously scheduled graduation dates. So we, we've adhered and stuck with those dates and times. We know that some of our graduates had relatives coming in and, you know, we wanted to kind of stick with those dates to ensure that we did not change so much. Cap and gown pickup information, we will start cap and gown pickup, May, the week of May 12th through the 15th, and we have a plan for that. Students are scheduled to come in, we're 10 at a time, we're in the parking lots, we have everything kind of laid out so that we still will be able to adhere to all of the social distancing guidelines. The cost is $60, it includes their cap gown, their personalized stole and their medallion. This is the cap and gown pickup schedule, but they have individual appointment times that are mailed with, along with their letter. Those are already ready, just waiting on approval. And that is our graduation plan. Are there any questions?
Before, before taking questions from the board, I just want to really underscore the fact that, one, I'm excited and hope others are with the plans. And I think this will be really special for our scholars and families. But also, just want to underscore that the, the goal here is to simulate the graduation as, and to greatly limit the numbers of young people who will even be in the stadium at the same time. As you heard, they'll be brought in in groups of 10. Folks will remain in their cars queued up to come up to the entrance for the stadium. So we, we, the team actually has thought a great deal about safety, even while stimulating this experience and creating something that I think will be really beautiful for the young people. Any questions or reactions, comments from board members?
Ms. Marshall Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to commend you and your committee group that put all of this together. This is so very, very exciting and I'm sure the students will be very pleased with this. So just want to commend you all for such creativity.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And as the parent of a 2020 graduate, I
Oh, my goodness.
I am, I'm really, really appreciative of how thoughtful you've been about their safety, but I am so glad that you thought about their experience as well. And she's been nagging me all week about, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do? I can finally tell her. Thank you so very, very much, just to us and my family, thank you.
Thank you all for supporting us.
And I too would like to commend you all for the creativity. This was, this is absolutely genius.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Any other comments, board members?
I just have to say, when I first got him of it without all the details, I said, what? But I think it's gonna be really nice. Thank you for your leadership and everything you're doing to make it happen for these young people.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah, there's been lots of people in my ear about what we should do, and it's all of them. So congratulations.
Yes, indeed. Just genius.
All right, board members, is there a motion to approve this item, action item?
I so move.
Second.
Dr. Hilliard has moved. Mr. Figueroa has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you so much. All right, board members, now we are, now we're moving on to the Consent Agenda Finance. And as it's been said already, we've had an opportunity to review the items here. Are there any further questions? If there are no further questions, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items Finance?
Still moved.
Second.
Dr. Sevek has moved, and I think it was Dr. Harrison that seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the Consent Agenda Items Finance is approved. Now we have Consent Agenda Items General. Again, all of the Consent Agenda Items have been presented to the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items General?
I so move.
Second.
Dr. Hilliard has moved, and Ms. Hilliard and Dr. Luckett have seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now, board members, we have the Consent Agenda Items Personnel. All of the Consent Agenda Items Personnel also have been reviewed by the board previously. We have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items Personnel?
Still moved.
Second.
Dr. Sevek has moved. Figueroa has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Also, board members, I want to bring to your attention that there was an error earlier. I think when I listed the agenda, I listed the wrong date. They had said that we were, the minutes that were approved were for April 21st. Attorney Turner, is there a need to have another vote, or can we have this just adjusted?
I think if there's an understanding among the board members that it was just a misstatement, as long as the minutes reflect what the correct action was intended by the board, then you're fine.
All right, thank you.
We understand.
Is there, is there a need to hold an executive session?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. If there's no need to hold an executive session, ugh, executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved, and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Y'all have a good evening.
Great meeting.
Stay strong.